Thank you ladies and gentlemen for coming to the regular session of City of South Fulton. At this time. If you have any cell phones, we ask that you turn them off or put them on vibration. Including us up here. At this time, I would like to have the clerk do the invocation, I mean do the invocation. He called our agreement.
Mayor William Bill Edwards. Mayor Pro Tem Mark Baker. Councilmember Captain Rowell. Councilmember Connerly Seguns. Councilmember Ellis D. Willis. Councilmember Naomi McEaly.
Here.
Councilmember Rosie Jacksen.
Here.
And the councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, you have a board. Do you want to entertain a motion to close?
I will. I will entertain a motion to close today in session. Make motion to close today in session.
Hear me?
I wish to second. Proper move to second the discussion. Hearing none, let's vote. That goes to the next session. Were there any decisions made in the taking session?
We're going to defer to the attorney.
Attorney, were there any decisions made and actions taken?
No, there were no actions.
Okay, thank you. We now have the invocation by our chaplain, all about the pledge of allegiance. Let us all stand. As we prepare to take the attitude of prayer, just want to remind you around that seventeen years ago on nine eleven, our nation was reminded that we are one. And that we cried together, we moaned together, we ached together. More than anything that we are one. So as we prepare for prayer, we just bow our heads for a moment of silence in memory of all those who have been touched. Oh God, on that day seventeen years ago, we learned that we are one nation under God. And that is what with liberty and justice for all. Just as we were reminded then how we are one, that with one cry we all cry, and with one laugh we all laugh, when one ache we all ache, when one suffer we all suffer. Reminded us that we are one. And that's what the City of South Fulton is all about. A city of oneness. So that all that we do of God, we do it together as one body, one team. So continue to bless our leadership, our mayor, our council, our city manager, and the entire staff. So that all that we do from this moment on will continue to be a pattern of oneness. This is what we pray. Let us all say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flagline of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. We're going to begin from the agenda a little bit. We have two presentations that we left over before we went into executive session. Mr. Board, if you'd call.
Yes, the first item is a presentation by Mrs. Miranda Sutton. She's founder of Entertainment.gov. And she has a presentation titled Building a Relationship Between Entertainment and Government.
I consult cities on how to be film friendly and develop an economic development policy around film and entertainment. And I'm so happy to be here this evening, and thank you for having me during dinner, Mr. Baker. Okay, a little technical difficulty. I guess while we get that together, I'll just tell you a little bit about myself. I am an entertainment executive. I've been in different facets of the business for over twenty-five years. I founded the Mayor's Office of Film and Entertainment for the City of Atlanta. And that is how I began on this journey of becoming a film commissioner. They're certified with the Association of Film Commissioners International. I am certified at the highest level. And it is my expertise in knowing how to turn entertainment properties, filming, film policies into income generators for municipalities. So let's look at the challenge. With increasing opportunities from the booming film industry, how can South Fulton compete and be more efficient in the film and entertainment industry? Solution: Entertainment.gov can help create a film policy that is efficient for every party involved, especially involving the community, the government, and industry. So it's very important, as you know, Georgia's film industry is a nine point five billion dollar industry with a direct impact spend of two point five billion dollars in the metro Atlanta region. And, you know, there were over four hundred or so films filmed in 2017. And most seventy-five to eighty-five percent of that filming happened within the metro Atlanta area. I worked closely with the Fulton County Film Commission to establish their film commission, also to establish their film policy, which now they permit film productions to move around Fulton County, especially in utilizing their buildings or courthouses and things like that, so that they can have a cohesive policy to generate more income for Fulton County. And with that being said, I have, like I said, many, many solutions to what can benefit the City of South Fulton in film and entertainment. So my government and municipal services include reviewing existing standards, operating procedures relating to film production. Like, so what, when film permits are issued, what is the policy? Do you have a policy? Do you need a policy? I can help you work closely with the city attorney to create a film policy that is film friendly to the industry, that protects city property, and that is also conducive to working with the communities and generating income around certain properties so that your community benefits. With the tax incentive coming into the state, it is beneficial to most cities to have a film policy so that you can benefit from that high tide that is floating, all the votes with all the films happening. So as your municipal services are taxed when they come into your city, you want to have a policy in place to generate, you know, income from those services that are being utilized, and also the human capital, the time, that is spent around processing those requests. I also can help recommend workforce and education experience and incentive programs. I can advise on local tax incentives and union-related issues. Counsel on the rules of engagement between the communities and film productions. What does that look like? When my neighborhood is impacted by a film company? What rights do I have? Where can I go? Is there a one-stop shop place here in the city that can answer my questions, my concerns, any issues that I have? So we can, so I can handle that legwork for you. So, again, the necessities of a film and entertainment city are establishing a film policy and procedures so you have the ability to make changes quickly, access resources, also maintain the confidentiality of the productions that are coming into filming your city, and have certainty and control over your environment. That's why a policy is so imperative. Also, you want to have a digital platform forward-facing so that productions have an easy way of finding out how to film in your city. Because as movies come in to South Fulton, you know, we consider this marketing. It is all marketing for the City of South Fulton. So you can create through your digital platform like a GPS locator system that when someone clicks on that, on that, what do you call that, that little dot on the map, it'll open up and say, oh, this movie was filmed here. And now it participates closely with what Mr. Pike spoke earlier about in terms of tourism. It forms a sort of what they call screen tourism. Also, you will, through your digital platform, you'll have, you'll be able to capture big data, location production, and expenditure reports. And you'll be able to communicate with the public clearly about the impact that filming has had on South Fulton. And also, in working with the Fulton County Film Commission, we set them up on an online cloud-based film permitting platform that is also used by the City of Atlanta and the cap county. So now, the Fulton County Film Commission is offering that service for free for a year to all of the cities within Fulton County. So you will automatically be able to come online and be in step, in process with what Fulton County is doing with your other sister counties, also with the state and their initiatives. And I can also help you develop a strategic plan for economic development around film and entertainment so you can capture the direct, indirect, and induced impact of film and entertainment on your city. Again, workforce training, also developing marketing strategies, a unique selling position for the City of South Fulton. Also, yeah, just having dialogue with a friend of mine here, April Rogerson, and she was talking about creating, you know, indigenous property here solely to South Fulton, you know, a family day picnic. And that type of property can benefit from a public-private structure. So I consult on how to set those things up within your city parameters here locally. Okay, so one of the first things that would take place in working with your economic development office is to have an assessment of a lot of your properties and what you have available for filming throughout the county. For instance, if you have industrial warehouse spaces that are sitting empty, those are perfect for the repurpose for production houses and production studios. I'll give you an example, when working with the City of Atlanta, the old Sheraton GICC was sitting dormant at the airport for over, for almost a decade. So I came in, did a contract for that to be turned into a temporary studio. Fast Seven film there, Sleepless film there. So, and it generated income for the City of Atlanta's, you know, general fund because it was just on the books but not generating anything, but then it was once filming started happening there. Also created jobs locally. So I will also take a look at your other locations within the cities because schools are popular for filming, morgues are popular for filming. Also, you know, if any of your residents have an interest in putting their homes up for filming opportunities that can offset, you know, the bottom line in their communities, you can house all of that information on your site locally, but also partner with the state's film site because they have the video. So you want to make sure that all of your locations are housed, not only locally, but that information is funneled through the state and also funneled through the county. So when requests come in for different housing, you know, styles for whether it's schools, whether it's, you know, whatever it is, whatever locations that the productions are looking for, your information is current, it's in there, and up to date. And then also work with economic development to develop a strategy around film and entertainment for the next three to five years. So places that succeed in attracting entertaining creative class people prosper. Those that don't fail, and that's Richard Florida. He is the author and creator of The Creative Economy. So my client list has included, since I started this work, the City of Atlanta, the City of Delonaga, and the North Georgia Film Office. Decide the cap, like I said, I consulted them on their five-year strategy for film and entertainment. Select Fulton, I worked with Shana Chavis and James Rees. And also the City of Jackson, Georgia. They wanted a film policy because they had stranger things inadating their city and needed a little help. And thank you, that is Miranda, and any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Well, this information because it's something that we need to get a handle on. A lot of what you're saying has already been done enough. We just haven't rigged it in yet.
Yes, yes.
So it's big, so I want to thank you for bringing this presentation to us. Mr. Manager, I think he's an awesome resource that we need to look into in terms of bringing in our filming to our city. Question, Mr. Board?
I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of Dr. Lewis Edwards and the South Fulton Career Academy. They do have a film program and many of the students are for themselves. So I would love to see them, you know, work towards getting tracked into jobs.
Absolutely, and one of the other focuses as of late has been on the infrastructure businesses that support what's happening onset. Because you have a lot of local vendors here that have those job opportunities, and a lot of them need, you know, a trained workforce. So there's a great opportunity for that too, like courthouses, lighting houses, equipment companies.
Andrew Baker, Mr. Baker?
I just wanted to say thanks to Sutton for coming out and giving us this presentation. But I also wanted to emphasize on what's going on right now in the City of Atlanta, given that, I think, from December to after February, I guess early March, there's a moratorium on filming in the City of Atlanta. So I think in certain areas, and I think we could capitalize off of that. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yes, during course of Super Bowl, they are, you know, they will be inundated between that construction and everything else. From December to February, downtown Atlanta, which is Zone Five, is, you know, will be technically for all intents and purposes shut down. So that means the productions that, you know, would be coming will now be looking for other places to film. And the goal, you know, it's a state's initiative to move, to spread the filming around, you know, the state. Because, you know, we want everyone to benefit from the taxes and, you know, hope.
Mr. Manager, we need to get rid. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
This is your second question?
Uh, is it three one oh on there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hold it, wait, one more.
Actually, this is for people. I'm just wondering, do we need an ordinance or any, is there anything that we need to do legislatively to capture revenue?
Um, it just, it depends on... It just depends on what you want to do. I mean, what specifically, I think you probably would need more discussion to give me better direction as to what specifically you want to do. But once you reach that point, legislation would be appropriate.
So I'll just say specifically, in Atlanta, I'm assuming when people film in Atlanta, they get a license from the city?
Yes, so they receive a film permit. But Atlanta created, and I co-wrote this with Robert Shahar there, who was the city attorney, the entertainment, the film and entertainment ordinance. So it regulates the protection of the property. It also regulates the street and the road closures. So whether it's, you know, three days, five business days, things like that, yeah.
Mr. Manager, I really like, if you kept this on administrative level, I don't want everybody attacking you. But if you kept it on an administrative level, have a conversation today.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a great evening.
You too. Next, Mr. Board?
The next item is a presentation by Ms. Juan R. Smith. And a correction and partnership for Southern Equity presentation. Miranda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for affording me this opportunity. Amendment to the decision by Ms. Juan Smith. Thank you for introducing me correctly. And I'm with the Partnership for Southern Equity where Nathaniel Smith is our president and chief equity officer. He is known throughout the city and Southeast Americas as being the champion of racial equity as well as affordable housing. On September twenty-first and twenty-second, all roads lead to Morehouse College Massey Conference Center for the Just, as in justice, justice, energy summit. I am here today to ask the honorable mayor and all of the city council individuals who I know are so committed to our people to consider sending a delegation of three to six staffers as well as residents as you see fit to this particular conference. There are a lot of conferences, there are a lot of summits, there are a lot of conventions, so why this one? Because our focus is energy equity. For anyone who has not heard the term energy equity, energy equity is the fair distribution of the benefits and the burdens of energy production and consumption. Take a moment to think, does any of you as city leaders and as lovers of our people, are you aware that many of your constituents who are low-income or renters or persons of color are likely to spend a larger percentage of their income on utility bills than individuals perhaps in Alreda or the 303, 09 area codes in the metro area? And a number of you said, said yes. How about low-income and people of color are more likely to live next to nuclear plants and coal plants? And so those are the types of issues that we are thinking about. And so on one hand, the City of South Fulton has a demographic of constituents who fall into the tier of low income. But on the other end of the spectrum, there is a very affluent and stable community. And so there is a community who feels more of the burdens, but there's also a community that is positioned to take advantage of the benefits, however currently or not. And so the focus of this particular summit is to address both of those communities in three different ways. First, from a consumer or resident layperson's standpoint, there's an education path for that. So for example, there are sessions like learning to read a utility bill. We call it a bill reading party, right? Where individuals will have the opportunity to go line by line for their Georgia power bill or their water bill to understand the various charges, to learn all of the rates, and then to determine based on their personal scenario, which rate would be the best for them. Because being on the wrong rate can have you paying more than you should be paying. And to understand the additional charges that are on the bill. So perhaps as a community, we can advocate to be, we can advocate for Georgia Power and the PSC to be more mindful of our communities and all of the charges that they tack on to the bills. There's also going to be a session for community residents on Energy 101. And Energy 101 basically takes the residents from the point of production all the way to their particular utility bill in terms of, in terms of electricity. But what it also does is, is it lets them know that, that know perhaps all of the things that they are experiencing are not because they are, because they have not been diligent over their finances, or because they leave the light on. But, and often, many times, your demographic is predictive of the burdens that you will encounter in terms of electricity, in terms of water, and in terms of gas. And so once individuals are mindful that some of this is systemic, then they are empowered, number one, to be advocates. A couple of great things that we'll have, we're going to have an advocacy hub. And so what's going to happen in the advocacy hub is that anyone who has a challenge with the water bill, and I know some people in the room who have challenges with water bills, anybody who has been trying to navigate an issue with perhaps their gas or their electricity, we are going to pair them with advocates. How many times have you called and they told you that's not their office? Or how many times have you called to resolve an issue and it took an individual three weeks to call you back? Well, individuals who are at the point of crisis, individuals who have multiple pain points, oftentimes don't have the stamina to navigate the systems in order to rectify issues. And so the advocacy hub will be an opportunity for them to pair with an energy advocate to help them navigate any particular utility challenges that they're having. We talked about benefits and burdens, so what does this mean for the City of South Fulton? Why is this a council and a mayor's issue? Because there's economic development in place here. So perhaps you've heard of the City of Atlanta doing or adopting the 100% clean energy resolution. There's also a city in California where a Republican leaning, right? Because it's nonpartisan, but a Republican leaning mayor has adopted a 100% resolution. And not because he cares about trees or most of the constituents, but because it's good business sense and is physically responsible to lower the consumption, to be a producer of your own energy as a city, and to minimize the amount that you're paying to other utility providers, in this particular instance, electricity. So there'll be information in terms of practitioners, in terms of cities and individuals who are looking to make an economic shift on an institutional or municipal level in terms of the ways in which energy for the municipality are generated as well as consumption. In addition to that, we have something for everybody in the middle. So there's an organizing session. So for example, we, for individuals who are in the know, we know that in November there's going to be a PSC election. For individuals who are not happy about their power bills, this is a particular session where you learn who perhaps is and is not in the pockets of Georgia Power and other large businesses that regulate our electricity and our energy and what we as constituents and municipalities can do. There are charges on our Georgia power bills, for those of us who have Georgia Power, that are for plant Vogel, right? So what is it that we can do for this unending surcharge to the residents of Georgia that just continues to blow the budget, that continues to be supported by individuals who do not care that, again, we carry all of the burdens but none of the benefits? And then to further address that workload that is, that workforce that is ready for the individuals who perhaps have additional resources and capital, there's Solarize Atlanta. So there's an opportunity for municipalities as well as residents to partner in something called Community Solar. So there is, there are a number of opportunities. We are asking again that Sir Mayor, Sir City Manager, and all of the council persons consider sending staffers who perhaps may be interested in how this information and how these tools could benefit the great city of South Fulton as well as the residents. In addition to that, our organization would perhaps love to partner with the city to build out an equity strategy, an equity plan for the city. And I know you may say, well, you know, we are, you know, all individuals of color. Why would it be that we would need an equity plan? And I would ask that you would look to some of the neighboring cities of this great city of South Fulton, a number of institutions across the country that are ran by individuals who look like us. And when you do that, I want you to think about how the roots of systemic racism and supremacy run deep and how even when individuals who look like us are in positions of power and drafting policy and legislation, oftentimes it still doesn't benefit the people who need it the most. And so we would be just elated to work to ensure that there are safeguards in place to ensure that even in the times when we don't know it unintentionally, that we would always have low-income communities and communities of color and the people who need us to be at the helm, the top of our game the most, that we would consider them in all that that we do. So, are there any questions?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, we really appreciate that information. I'm sure we'll get six first people to come in to your fair. At this time, Mr. Kalina. Please get us that 100% energy resolution. I would love to see that adopted here. The, you gave the dates, the twenty-first and the twenty-second, which are next Friday and Saturday. You did say the time.
So registration begins on Friday, the twenty-first, at 2:00 p.m. There are a number of caucuses there. We were lucky enough to have Denise Fairchild, who is the author of Energy Democracy. She's having this event to be her book tour stop. having this event to be her book tour staff. And then there is a network mixer where thought leaders as well as industry professionals will be in the room just to talk about the latest and greatest practices and programs to adopt. And then at the website, you'll see Saturday morning begins at eight o'clock, 8:00 AM, and there's just a day full of panels. Again, there are three tracks, there is a track for just the lay resident, there is a learning path, as we like to call them, for organizers and advocates, and then there is another learning path for your practitioners and municipalities.
And then secondly, I am actually more, first of all, thank you, Councilman Baker, for bringing this great reading to my attention. We actually tonight have a second reading of our procurement ordinance. And one of the things that I was interested in is that even though we already blackest city in America statistically, I'm not sure that that is reflected in the entirety of our contracts, and I know that it is not reflected in the ownership of our land. And so I am very interested in you working with, I had already begun to work with our city attorney around making sure that we have equity in our procurement policies. I know that that can be a political or legal landline, and so it sounds like you have a lot of experience in that, and I'm hoping that we can either hold that or that we can amend that at some point to make sure that we address equity in our legislation.
The Partnership for Southern Equity approaches equity in three phases. Our work in energy, the organization as a whole does growth and economic development, so in terms of housing, contracts, transportation, that's our lens, but as municipalities and cities grow, that individuals aren't left out or displaced and that they also grow with the cities.
Okay. Councilwoman, yeah?
I want to say definitely thanks to you and thank you, Councilman Baker, for bringing forth. We, I guess, the Clean Energy Act and 100% Initiative has kind of been a baby of mine. It has been on the agenda for quite some time and just never made it to today's. So hopefully we'll be coming forward, it'll actually show how important that we need to move this legislation forward, because again, the 100% Clean Energy Act is something that we need to kind of spur economic development in our city. So I'm looking forward to seeing that come forward.
Okay, Councilwoman Gill, your turn.
I want to thank you as well. I'm looking at the, at the two passed out, and I'm so happy to see the Rambe House.
Yes, from Savannah.
I remember the Rambe House from back in the day, and more importantly, the slash and behind it, Citizens for Environmental Justice. So I'm hoping that Dr. McLean will be there.
Absolutely, she will be your speaker.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Goodness, thank you so much.
You'll see many of us there.
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that takes you to approval of today's consent agenda. Meeting minutes from Tuesday, August 24th, meeting minutes from Friday and Saturday, August 24th and 25th. And a proclamation for presentation, I'm not sure if Councilmember Khalid wants me to make note, there was a correction to a vote in the minutes from our last regular meeting on the Election Day resolution. In the minutes that are contained in your packet, it reflects a vote of four and three with the item passing, and the correct vote was six, one, so that will be corrected. And thanks to communications, Councilmember Khalid reporting those out.
Any other, any corrections to the question?
I'll let you have a motion.
Oh, I would like to add, this is for the regular.
Just the consent. I'm in motion to approve the consent agenda. As amended.
Second.
The proper moving second discussion, hearing now, all goes in favor. That passes, you have a motion, sir. Next honor is an approval of the regular meeting agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add, an ordinance, I mean, the city of South Fulton, no tax, no tax taxation ordinance for other lawful purposes.
Madam Attorney, I understand that this is something that has been done now is of grave importance, am I?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Because that is a rich discussion, because we don't do it, right?
Yes, time is of the essence. Yes.
All right. That's the end.
I'm a little too. I'm hoping to approve the regular meeting agenda for September 11th, 2018, as amended.
Proper move, seconded and discussed, all those in favor? That passes, sir.
Do not have the public comment portion of today's meeting, and for the purposes of the public as well as the mayor and city council, we actually are listening to the public today on three matters. The first matter is our general public comment section. We would also like to hear from the public regarding the budget, which was published and advertised for our second public hearing. And finally, there's a public hearing on an alcohol license for Arrow's Chicken and Ice Bar. So at this time, we have received eight speakers, so the first three speakers.
You just told me three things. Are you dividing them up like that?
No, we just collected the cards from everyone, so if there's anyone else in the room who's interested in speaking on any of those matters, please complete one of the speaker cards, and I think we got a few legislative specialists in the room, they'll help collect the cards and bring them up to me. So far, this was announced while you are wearing executive session.
They really, they hear, they can talk for anything they want, with their hands in hand.
Correct, I'm prepared to agenda.
I don't want people to think that they're going to talk, only talk about three things.
Okay, so the first matter, which is our standard practice, public comment, and that can be on any city-related matter, as well as the public hearing on the budget, and finally, we'll have a call for a public hearing on that.
I needed to say that. You said it was all going to be together, all right? But if they want to talk about something other than those three things that you talked about, they'll feel free to do that. Am I correct?
I think so, yes.
I want to come talk about it now, okay? To talk about them beyond those three things, right? I want to make clear, I don't want to run into anybody else.
Okay.
All right, we're still to our, how many speaker cards do you have?
We have eight speaker cards at this time.
We still have ten minutes, ten minutes time limit, right? Okay?
The first three speakers are Mr. Allen Kelly, Mr. Anthony D. Williams, and Mr. Clifton Rainey. If you'll please approach the podium.
Allen now. Allen had plans.
Okay. Mr. Williams, and Mr. Clifton Rainey, and Ms. Deborah Bonaparte. Mr. Williams.
Good afternoon, councilmen, Mr. Mayor. How y'all doing? I'm here in many regards. Tony Williams, San Town Football Commissioner and Director, I know I spoke last time. One of the main issues I got right now is the YAs and communication with parks and recreations. I really wish you guys would look at consideration of amending the current ordinance regarding civic rec. We did not ask for civic rec, let's get that clear. The YAs, we had a meeting, this is what the council wanted, that's what we was told. We asked, okay, you sure about that? Then it went on and on, found out that you guys were told that's what we wanted. So, at this current state, the way that civic rec is, I kind of almost propose that we need to kind of scrap it in the way that it's being done to the YAs and Captain Ms. Allison. I agree with you guys, as far as maintenance fee, if we're going to collect maintenance fee and do it the right way, let's just, hey, this is what it is. You have X, Y, Z of my kids, they are $20 for $25 for maintenance fee for football or baseball, boom, your registration is closed, you have 200 kids, I need my money, and kind of let us kind of manage and go on with the seasons. With civic rec and the way it's currently being done, it's put a lot of extra work on the volunteer people in the parks. It's a lot of work, a lot more work than what we already do. We're not city employees. And what it's making a lot of people do that's actually at the parks doing a lot of work, they're throwing their hands up and saying, hey, I'm done. It is too much. It's a volunteer position, and the way that it's being presented is almost like we're city employees. So the biggest thing, like, all of our costs, the new costs, what's going to be the new cost of registration? Each park is different. We cater to our own demographics, regardless of what y'all might have been told and other people may have said, there's no money in parks and recreations if you do it the right way. There's no money. So if you're gonna go up on the maintenance fee, I ask you give us enough time so that we can increase our registration and capture that money, and then we don't have no headaches. We don't have any problem paying, just give us ample amount of time and say, this is what the maintenance fee gonna be? I need this money at X, Y, Z time, and let's just work better in making it work together in the community, because we're there doing the day-to-day operations. And a lot of decisions and a lot of things that have been implemented on us, people have no idea because they're not in the parks day-to-day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As Mr. Rainey is coming, Ms. Deborah Bonaparte, and Ms. April Rogers, if you approach the center.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm only here as the Vice President of Walden Park. And I've been in Walden Park, I guess, from the second year it opened, I believe in 2003. But anyway, we're having our community day, and Mr. Mayor, and to you, our Mr. City Manager, I have your passes to our community day. You must have them, I'll be, you have to give them to me underneath the tree or at the table with the registrar of votes. That's where the two places are, I'll be. But these are your passes to get into our community day.
Is that two or eight?
And also, Mr. Mayor, the first responders, their invitation is coming from our president. So you know they will also be invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Next.
Oh, that's on the 29th.
I got you, man.
Hello, 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 Mr. Mayor, hello, council. My name is April Rogers, I am a realtor in South Fulton, in the city of South Fulton. I also live in the city of South Fulton. And I'm here today, I came to the previous meeting and you all were talking about the truck ordinance. I was moved to go to Derrick Road and check out what all is going on over there. Pretty bad. And I have tasked myself in the last year or so since we have become a city, I was very excited about cityhood and really being a positive role model and saying, come to South Fulton, we're doing great things, city of South Fulton is about to become something great, but then I heard about this truck ordinance. And my concern is for the residents, not only is it a hazard issue, it's a quality of life issue, but it's also a property value issue. And if I'm saying to prospective homeowners, come to South Fulton, we are doing great things, but we're allowing trucks to come up and down people's streets where they live, they're not, that's not something I could sell to anybody at all. So I just wanted to let you all know that although there may not be a lot of residents here, I know for a fact that there is no homeowner or any person resident that's living in the city of South Fulton that will want, have any trucks coming down their streets. And that's what I want to say today.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Bonaparte, Ms. Edwina Dixon, Mr. Stephen Smith, and Mr. Emmanuel Rainey, and then lastly, Ms. Glenda Collins. If any of you are present, please approach the center.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards and all of our city council members, especially Ms. Gomes, my council member. I just wanted to chat with you for a moment. I'm really, I'm very, very concerned about our young people, our teenagers. I hate to even watch the news now, because every day, there's some young person right here in Atlanta being handcuffed, running through a store, robbing, or being shot and killed. And I just feel like we as a community, as Khalid said earlier, we are the blackest city, and it seems like we have to take some steps. Something must be done to save us all, really. Our kids are our future, and unless we protect them and teach them, it does take a village. One of the things that prompted me to want to speak when we had the presentation earlier from the Parks and Recreation, and there are a number of things, I know Parks and Recreation cannot do it all, but there are some things that maybe can be done that they may not have thought about. One of the overriding concerns that we always hear from programs that help people is the lack of funding, and Parks and Recreation is no different from any others. I wonder if there could not be fundraising activities by the different teams and organizations and by Parks itself, such as GoFundMe or even donate.org, which I give to, and a lot of teachers use that to buy equipment and other supplies for their classes. We could also maybe do that for Parks and Recreation. I'm concerned when I see programs that come out through different organizations and activities that very few of them offer programs for our teenagers, 13 to 19 years of age, most of them for younger children in elementary schools. It's our middle school kids and our teenagers, particularly teenagers that are having the greatest difficulty, that we need to place more emphasis.
Just hang up, man.
Sorry, yeah?
Yeah. We got you on our buzzer.
Okay, can I just, I'm sorry. Okay, well.
We got you.
Okay.
All right.
There are some hours in to come.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Are any of the other speakers present?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Always a pleasure to see you all. My name is Emmanuel Rainey, this is Kevin Smith, we are board members of the Old National Merchants Association. Just want to make sure you all are aware that this Saturday, the registration is at seven o'clock, 7:00 AM, but at 8:30, we will have our Two Cities Strong 5K walk run. Two Cities Strong, South Fulton and the city of College Park, unite Old National Highway. So I want to make sure, we've had participation in the past from few councilmen, and this year, our grand marshal will be none other than Honorable William Bill Edwards. So I want to make sure we have, we have good representation, and again, it's a great event. As always, we put on a great event, Old National Merch Association's doing great things along Old National Highway and the God Road Corridor, so we want to make sure you all are invited. We have police coming out that will be helping and assisting, thank you all for that, as always, and we just look forward to seeing you this weekend, and we invite every citizen within this great city to please participate. You third place.
Last year.
We know you're gonna be stronger this year. Yes. Since we got another man, I'm gonna go ahead and use that time. For the residents as well as the mayor, the city council, you know in the past that we've represented South Fulton very strong, we're very supportive in even the inception of the city, so we do expect participation. This is a great event, everybody's always talking about what's not good on Old National, this is an event for all ages, all genders, all colors, we're gonna, it's Peachtree certified, and I don't know, for those of you who are runners, being Peachtree certified is a very prestigious event, I mean, certification where it's qualifying for the Peachtree Road Race, which is international. So we really want to make sure that we get the support from you guys, and we know we will. All right? So we appreciate this time, thank you. So we appreciate this time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Glenda Collins, District Five, Fairwood, H O eight. In regards to the budget and fund balance, that should be sixteen percent and ours is one percent. How will we become in compliance and how will the city move to correct this situation? What is the timeframe and what are the consequences if we do not become compliant? In regards to the new website program for information provided to the citizens on the web, it is difficult to follow. And it was difficult for employees to provide the information requested on Friday during the executive break. Another question regarding the implementation of this new program website, did you parallel to the previous system? But I do wanna thank the staff for all the effort and help that they have given to us and listening to us so that we can be sure and get the information we need so that we can show up at the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much. For the speakers, okay. Next is first. Just to make sure, um, what we said earlier, are there any members of the public present to speak regarding the budget? If so, please approach the podium at this time.
I'm gonna have to step back for a second. Deborah Bonaparte?
Okay, yes, we had you too.
Okay, okay. How y'all doing? I, um, I wanna take this opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Deborah Bonaparte. Um, I have a question that I had, um, twice that I had came, uh, to the, uh, I had just constantly cleared in another person about the, um, about the green space. Uh, I was told that there was a large contingency in South Fulton about the, uh, degradation of the green space and a lot of the building going on. Um, to date, I haven't heard, uh, I was told that I would be contacted with those people, whoever they are. I haven't heard, um, I'm concerned about, okay. My concern is about, uh, the amount of building and the loss of green space, which I think is an attribute to South Fulton. Um, I haven't heard anything about, is there a plan for responsible growth? Um, you know, I, I think the parking rec division is important, but I do think that wildlife and wetlands in South Fulton is definitely a attraction. And as I drive around, I see a lot of it disappearing at, uh, to me at high rate. I was encouraged by the latest call earlier about the one to percent Clean Energy Act. Um, and is there a push for green jobs, forestry, or fishing careers from the City of South Fulton for people to go into that training for this side of town? Okay. Who's in question? My name is Deborah Bonaparte. I was told that there was a large contingency. I'm worried for those people are. My phone number is four oh four nine two one seventy-one eighty, if anybody wants to get together on this.
And give it, Bonaparte. Mr. Mayor, members of council, that takes you to a public hearing on an alcohol license. That's for Harold's Chicken and Ice Bar. This is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The item for you is an alcohol license request for First TNT Enterprises, also known as Harold's Chicken and Ice Bar. The property is located at fifty-four ninety-five Old National Highway, Suite B eleven and B twelve. The property is located in Council District Five. Um, all relevant departments have reviewed this request and have recommended approval of this item.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, the advocate here, those who are going to speak for it again.
Hello, how are we doing? I am, um, my name is Taryn Longford, accompany in First T N S Enterprises. I, um, made the decision to open a Harold's Chicken. I have a location in Edgewood. Uh, that was my first restaurant. And from that point, I grew. And I feel like South Fulton is a good area for the things that I'm trying to do. Um, we've put a lot of heart into it, a lot of money. Um, we've gotten great feedback. Um, and I just wanna do things for the community. I wanna be involved in our friends to, um, doing things for the community as far as the homeless. You know, wherever there is a need, we would like to be here to meet those needs and to be able to let South Fulton know that we're here to support it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone speak for or against? Would anybody be proud of you? Eric, and I close, I, I close the, uh, here, the public hearing. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that takes you to the business section. Of the agenda, the first item is a resolution, Resolution two thousand and eighteen, that's zero fifty-eight, a resolution to adopt the City of South Fulton fiscal year twenty nineteen final budget. Mr. Clerk, does that, does that require an action? Do I have to go on that?
Uh, Ms., uh, Director Reed, can you approach?
All right, well, let's do that. You couldn't fry chicken.
Well. I would like to make a motion. I know it's Ms. Jackson's district, but I love Harold's Chicken. I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of, uh, our land.
Second.
All right, excuse me. Uh, excuse me. The property moved in second in discussion.
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Gillian?
Ms. Jackson's first.
I can see it. Ms. Jackson's first. She'll be.
I appreciate that. Um, 'cause I've been speaking to the young lady back and forth for a while now. Um, what's she up? Are you the person I've been talking to? Um, Mr. Twett?
I'm Taryn.
Mr. Twett, uh, Twett? Twett's Originals? Yes, okay, yes, ma'am. Yeah, calling through you. They call, another word, calling through.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No, I'm trying to. They would stop talking around.
Thank you, ma'am, I'm sorry. But anyway, I just wanted to, um, say thank you for taking your time and just, just bearing with us to get everything done. I know you want your permanent license. And I wanna move that, um, we approve this.
It's already emotional. Okay, uh, Ms. Gillian?
Never mind.
Okay, this is probably move second, no further discussion. Let's go, please. That passed you damn asleep, come ready to leave.
Excuse me. Mr. Khalid has one question.
I have one question for Madam Holder. Do you have a, for, for the holder, do you have an opening date?
Um, yes, actually, um, the twenty-fifth, so, um, I'll be inviting. The twenty-fifth, actually, I'm going to be inviting everyone for the soft opening, friends and family, uh, everyone that helped get me to this point, so, definitely, everyone will be invited.
September twenty.
Will be there.
September.
Yes, and I'll be sending out, I'll be going to the actual office and letting everybody know.
Will be there. All right, thank you.
Thank you also, ma'am.
Mr. Clerk, turn to your next item on the printed agenda, the resolution to adopt the City of South Fulton fiscal year twenty nineteen final budget. Adopted. That's what's on the printed agenda, I believe, the managers.
Yes.
Mr. Emmanuel.
Yes, I think other than the advisement of the CFO, what we have asked is to be able to move this to September eighteenth. I think, uh, we made some great strides in incorporating the request of council, but we have not quite, uh, fully reconciled the budget. And so we just asked, I think we presented some information, and you'll hear from the CFO shortly. But, uh, that date, and I think we talked about it at the last meeting, uh, to actually approve it on September eighteen. But because it was not an agenda item, we actually had to wait until this meeting for you to officially change the approval date to September eighteen.
So we, this is just a, uh, presentation?
Yes, a two-slide presentation, but it will require that action that we talked about at the last meeting to officially move the approval to September eighteen.
Congratulations, Mr. Malazi.
Yes. The, the fiscal impact that we were going back to the board, you have information on that?
I think he might, but I think it's separate from this item.
Okay, so what do we, I just wanna know.
So I think you, let me clarify. I think you can definitely discuss it, your, uh, inquiries related to that. I just don't wanna confuse the council or the public that the item that we're actually addressing now is just the.
Why don't we do this? We'll just make a presentation if she wants to do something.
And then we can discuss it. Does that work? Counselor, do that work?
So this is a follow-up of the public hearing that we had. It's just a matter of showing you that the public hearing we are having today is to show the revenues and expenditures. But the details of the expenditures will be, uh, upmoded as we make those changes. And everything will come forth to you on the eighteenth of September as you, uh, adopt the budget. So this is just a format of the second public hearing, will show you what the revenues are. That's the, um, slide you have. The follow-up will be the different funds expenses that we have. We have the general fund, uh, with other of those funds, those are on the expenditure side. So we have revenues, we have expenditures as required for public hearing or second public case. But the rest of the details, after all the adjustments that we have, the deductions that we are going to make, uh, to be recommended by the city manager to you will be provided on the eighteenth before we adopt the budget.
Okay? Anybody got any questions? Are you finished?
I have none.
Any questions for him on this issue? I'll give this as well as she had.
Um, when do we send our suggestions on? When do we send suggestions on making adjustments to the budget?
So what happened on Friday, you council, you had several suggestions that you wanted them to be incorporated in the budget. We have those ones. And the city manager plus staff, they are making some recommendations to reduce, as you saw on Friday, that our fund balance had gone up to one percent. With the adjustments you gave us on Friday, today our fund balance is zero point zero three, less than one percent. So, and some other projects again that are yet to come that are needed during the transition have not yet been accommodated. So all of those things will be accommodated, will be making deductions to different departments, will be making, meeting with the departments to recommend the deductions so we can accommodate your suggestions. As you will see towards the end of that, uh, summer that we had on Friday, are some projects that are not yet funded and we need funding.
Well, I think this, this may be helpful to just kind of tie me in to direct you to some of those specific areas. So lighting was not originally in our proposed budget, but it's something that the city needs desperately, and you guys highlighted to us. So we have to put the lighting study in there. And so that has been included in the budget. I think, uh, another area that, uh, we failed to include because we thought we would be able to settle some of those things in eighteen, you know, we still have the Tremel Crow, um, transition from parks. While it is ours, there was a, uh, obligation against it. And so when it is time to make that transition, it would be FY nineteen, another, again, Tom Lowe, which I think you guys know we are in a conversation with, with Fulton County for that transition. And so, um, the funds related to those acquisitions are also been included in the budget, but we have to make some additional cuts to be able to have that balanced budget and the fund balance. So Mr. Malazi is basically referring to those items identified on Friday and some of those things that, uh, were omitted. They have now been put in and we have to make those cuts.
Okay. So that, I, I was given, we were given a twenty nineteen budget proposal changes. And in this chart, I don't see anything proposed on, uh, what we voted on last week, the election day. Um, also, does this new furniture, including movement trees, does this include furniture for all parks and recreation?
Almost all of this one, they came to, you suggested the need of the grant writer and additional improvement to fire station, uh, computer in parks. You also talk about the citywide lighting and the city manager has said all these were things that came from you that we are trying to find the, uh, funding to include in the budget.
And the short answer is yes, it does include those things that you highlighted. I think one of the things for, uh, election day that we found from the fifth is that a large amount of, um, the funding, not all, but a large amount of the funding, um, allocated to that one in particular. We wouldn't call that out because it is a fee that is already included, um, when you pass the budget. And so there's, there's no call-out related to that in particular. I think that estimate for the parks that, that amount that is plugged in is right now what the estimates are, and it would cover all of the parks that need new furniture. So again, short answer is yes. I'd also say, I think Mr. Malazi has pointed out that they're still trying to true it up, include all of the things that you requested. And then you know how the process goes, where we have to, we may cut this, we may adjust the price for this. And so that's the process they're still going through.
Okay. So the fiscal impact statement that you sent us, it included, I, I get. So from my understanding, you said it's police and fire, okay? Um, and I get that. But what about the additional memo that was sent that's requiring, um, workers? So there was another memo that was sent out from the clerk's office, and the clerk's office is saying that it outlined the staff that's gonna be needed to, or from the city that's gonna be working on that thing. So do we, is that incorporated in the amount that you gave us?
So I got to know the memo that came from the city clerk, if it's the same piece that was sent to you yesterday or the day before when you said send this one by noon. And in that one, they, it was said that, uh, when we close, when we're on holiday, you have public safety that will be needed to be at work. I'll give an example of police. Police will have, that have to be on duty. Fire will have, that will be on duty. It's not all the police, and it's not everyone that works on that holiday that gets overtime. You have scheduled staff for police that they are working on that day, it's their scheduled day. Those ones, they don't get any overtime other than their normal shift. There are those ones that we are not scheduled to work on that day. When they go to work, they get more. That's the addition that you talk about that will get. So we have three groups in that, uh, piece that you got. You have the nineteen thousand. Nineteen thousand is for the all police for one day, all of them, one day. And it's not all of them that will get the overtime. It's just those ones that were not scheduled. Fire will be the same. Fire is thirty thousand dollars a day for all of them. It's only the unscheduled one. Then you have the last portion of which is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. That's for all regular employees.
I understand.
Okay.
And I thank you for clarifying the public safety portion. So I understand the rest of the employees. My question is, the fifty K that you quote for public safety, are you saying because all of those employees may not be due, um, holiday pay because they're scheduled to work, that, that may be lower?
If you saw that in that memo, we said the true cost, you can't know it, you don't know. So as I said, fifty thousand is for, uh, fifty thousand is all of them, but it's not all of them that will get that. So it will be much, much lower.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
My second question was, we received a second memo today around three PM. And Mrs. Gillian asking what other causes are referring to? And Mrs. Gillia asking what other costs was I referring to other than the fifty thousand? I was referring to when I had conversations with staff, I was told that there were employees that were not taken into consideration in the FIS. And that's what that memo that was sent today at three P M stated, that we had to have essential staff for election day. And so my question is, is that essential staff included in the fifty K?
So essential staff to ask to the memo that I sent to you, I meant public safety. So there's another one that came from the clerk, the other one that came from your blog today, I have not seen, I don't know, but if it's the same that was sent to all of you, it's the fifty thousand dollars. Actually, it's up to fifty because it's forty-nine plus. So the cost will be much, much less.
So the essential staff for election day you said is included in that fifty K?
Public safety that are going to work. No, essential staff that are going...
So the fifty K, okay, is only public safety?
That's what is included, yes, ma'am.
So the memo that was sent, Mr. City Manager, we got a second memo today. That second memo outlined from the clerk's office that we had to have essential election day staff. It was about approximately, approximately how many employees, Mr. Massey?
Okay, so if you let me clarify, but now earlier this week, the mayor asked me for what support the clerk's office believes we will need to conduct an election. So that's, I guess that's what you're saying, you guys, and I only give to the mayor, who's the only person who asked me for it. So it's similar though to the same discussion we had last year around July when we were talking about the election day. But the best model I got from the city of Atlanta, I think, and I canvassed a lot of the other municipalities, but it includes support staff for a call center the day of the election. That's thirty minutes before the election day starts, thirty minutes at the end of the qualifying. Having floaters who are going around, perhaps five districts, so could have up to seven people floating around each of the five, three to five precincts in each district, just to check out for any trouble spots or concerns. Having I T support. The clerk staff, of course, will be there and be present so that we can attend the board of registration and the election meeting as they're counting their votes. And then, of course, what you all have already mentioned, police for traffic and crowd control are areas that we think might be problematic. So I can't say the exact number, but I would guess it's somewhere ten to thirteen individuals. But I, no one had asked me for that information until Monday, when the mayor asked me for it.
Okay, I used to, um, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
So, so are you saying that you would have to hire thirteen staff in order to, what are you saying?
I would think that we would utilize existing staff. Which means that they will work on election day, but to serve, but to serve these different purposes that I just described.
And so they would, do you, are you finished? So they will be paid, how will they pay?
So these employees, whether they was a holiday or not, they were still to be paid. And if there were thirteen of those ones, most of the times they would have made arrangements with their directors in the departments. Either they, it would be time off. And even if it's not, each and every department has got an extra ten percent. So if it's thirteen, it will be very minimal to the cost.
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, respectfully, I'm gonna say that when we asked for fiscal impact statements for a reason. And the fiscal impact statement that we received is not accurate because it doesn't account for these additional thirteen employees that is going to have to be paid holiday pay. And let's see, I don't think that when we ask for fiscal statements, they should be accurate. We should be informed before we go on policies. We're not being fiscally responsible with taxpayers' dollars when we don't have accurate information.
Let me, let me say one thing. I wish Mr. Canley that we had, we would have did the first time, James swapped the holidays. We would be having some conversations. Actually, Mr. Mayor, we approved that in detail. But now it's gonna cost me a lot of money, right? But let me just say this, let me say this. I agree to this point. If you're gonna have a FIS, a financial impact statement, it has got to be thought out, thought out, vetted properly, and then bring in the best information based on that. I don't think in this situation that that happened, I'm not gonna, we got all these. I'm just saying that we're gonna be, if we're gonna make these kinds of decisions based on a financial impact statement, we got to have a good financial impact statement. I'm not comfortable with this FIS, and I told him, I told Mr. Malazi, that I was, that I wasn't comfortable with that. I was not comfortable with it. So I don't know whether we have to, maybe if one is prepared, we sit down with a committee, two or three of us, and vet it to make sure everything's included. I don't know what the answer is.
Well, so, so I think, Mr. Mayor, you know, for the council, I think first, I think there are two separate issues. One, I'm excited that you guys have looked at our city as progressive, identified the potential of, you know, encouraging our citizenship to get out and vote. So I think that's a very big thing, that's a very positive thing. Especially since our citizens, and I know we have some engagements that are here in the room, but overall, we have some of the lowest voter turnout in the state. So the first thing is, I am thankful as not only a resident, but as the city manager, who has to help administer things, that you guys are considering all of these progressive activities. Secondly, which is a second issue, is while we are harping on the FIS process, I think we have talked about bringing forward the way we process legislation, which the FIS is a part of. And so we have committed, remember today, we could not include it on the work session because we have budget-related issues and things of that nature. But at the next regularly scheduled meeting, we have developed a process for the legislation ecosphere, which would ensure that all considerations are met. I think while this FIS is thoughtful and it includes most things, you've highlighted some things that may be missing. And I think our CFO and his team have highlighted that and they're ready to kind of make some improvements on this as well as the process overall. But I would say generally, the expenses have been captured. There's an overestimation saying that about fifty thousand dollars in cost related to being off that day are there. But I think the CFO has said, of that fifty thousand, it's probably about thirty-five thousand in real cost that we can identify. So there's some wiggle room. It may not and probably doesn't cover the thirteen estimated persons that the clerk has identified, but I don't think the numbers are ridiculously off. And so you do have a good idea of what those costs are. So I just wanna make sure that we highlight that.
I mean, I mean, I should want things clear now.
Yes, sir.
I stepped outside of the box. It's not about what's happening right now. But I'm saying is, as a process, that this, even this process, for as long as we've been out with it, should have been more inclusive than it was, that's all I'm saying.
Understood.
And I would like to see us as we go forward, when these things happen. I think we have ample time because you agreed that time we brought the legislation.
Yes.
That fourteen days, I think there was, was enough. And so, and then we would have it back in time, well, here's what we didn't get back in time. And then when we got it back in time, it's my humble opinion, that it did that a whole lot better. So I'm just, as we go forward.
And yes, sir, you one-hundred percent correct, that's one-hundred percent accurate. I am confident, though, I'm gonna tell you, I'm kind of excited about it because I don't wanna keep bringing this back to the forefront. Just me personally, I'm just keeping a tally with you. So I think as we, as long as when we bring this process back, we all commit to this process. And so I usually don't have those conversations, but when we bring it back, everybody, without exception, has to commit to the process that we come up with. And from then on, I will fall on this sword until I'm dead and gone, that it will be handled appropriately. But we have to do that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Yes, I think one of our Achilles' heels as a council has been that when we receive answers that we don't like, we begin to have individual objections to the process, so we never commit to any process. But I have a few questions first for our city clerk, because I got your, your, I got your memo today, Mr. Massey. So your, these thirteen staff, can you just say a little bit more about what they would be doing on election day?
Okay, I think I just did say it, but I'll say them again.
Yes, please.
So you'll have a call center where residents in the city can call in and ask questions about where am I supposed to go to vote? I'm having some type of issue, they sent me away. So you're troubleshooting in a call center. That's, this is the best model that I've seen. And we actually talked about this in July of twenty seventeen. So it's kind of like a reiteration of the same exact conversation that I was just asked Monday, probably, to reiterate some of these same things. But the other is to be floaters around the precincts. When they're within your city, sometimes we're going to get involved with utilizing our own facilities for voting. Eventually, we're gonna, I guess, equalize or have equity across the districts. So we'll have like the same number of precincts in everybody's district. We won't necessarily just take everything that Fulton County was doing. We might rethink the process in terms of what precincts we'll use and where. Like, we might find that in our, in our facilities, they are very equipped to handle the voters than the way that the county decided to deploy the voting. So you'll have people going around there, then you'll have the I T support. Because if something goes out with an I T system in one of our city facilities, you'll have I T people there who are on hand and are on our behalf as the city, trying to help people work through those issues. So I estimate it too, but that's similar to what Atlanta did. Clerk staff will have to be there because there'll be vote counting. So you know, after the elections close and the ballots are counted, everybody goes off to English Avenue and they count the ballots and you get the final vote. And then that information needs to be uploaded to a website and provided so the people will know what happens. Especially next year, when we have our first elected official running in the city. And then lastly, and that could include an attorney representative, if the city attorney wants to, if there are any legal issues that might come up related to anything related, the counting issue, there's sometimes it's a representative from the city attorney's office who will also stay up that night. And then finally, it's just any problem areas that you might encounter based on crowd control. But that was what I believe Frank already included, was police or public safety support. But that's any city, probably anywhere, who is gonna conduct an election. These are things that you need to be thinking about because all of you will be asking questions about what has happened over here. And you'd have to work with Fulton County, who's gonna run our elections, to get the information timely and quickly.
Yeah, thank you. And so, I mean, all of that sounds great. And we did talk about it in twenty seventeen, and since then, we've had two elections. We had a March primary and we had a July one. Did we use any of these staff for either of those elections?
No, you wouldn't do it for, so I'm talking, this is all about twenty nineteen.
Okay, this is all about twenty nineteen.
And then maybe again, twenty twenty-one. These are when the city is actually having...
So none of this, none of this discussion that we're having now affects our FY twenty eighteen budget? We're talking about FY twenty nineteen.
Correct.
And are we, we're currently paying Fulton County to run our elections?
Yes, we are.
How much are we paying them to do that?
For this special election this year is twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. So I had a few budget, a few budget questions, Mr. Malazi. The computers, we talked about having computers in our park facilities, so our young people, you know, have access. We could have internet equity, that's also an equity that we were concerned about. That is in our budget?
That's what you suggested only Friday and then included in the...
Okay, and the funding of a separate CFO and treasurer position, is that included in this amount that we have now?
I have no idea on that one, you may ask the city manager maybe.
Is it, is that included in our budget, Mr. City Manager? And then also, Madam City Attorney, do we, when do we need to make a decision about those positions? And how do, how do we need to do that? I'll let the city manager go first, just yes or no, is that included in this number that we see here?
To be honest, I mean, the CFO says he doesn't know, then the answer would be no. I would say that that is one of the areas that I believe we've mentioned that we need to look at as we make budget adjustments. But I'm not certain that we have done that. I will say, you guys asked for some research first, just on job description, and so we finished that. Remember, it was Friday and today is Tuesday, so we're still working on some of these items.
Listen, it's a little concerning that our budget is creeping towards one hundred million dollars and we're not sure what all is included and not included.
Well, so, listen now, Ferris, I'm gonna push back there and that, I think we're very aware of what's in the budget. I think there are a couple of items that have not been completely ingrained, but we're very sure and on top of the budget and have made a lot of adjustments to ensure that it is a quality, well-rounded budget that meets every requirement that council has asked for. But we've asked for more time to make sure that each one of these areas is appropriately incorporated and we won't be done with that until the end of this week.
Next time is another great question. So Madam City Attorney, as you opine about what, how, how we need to move forward for going to split those positions, I would like you also opine, as our parliamentarian, what we need to do. We talked about this September eighteenth meeting, but we've made no action. I think that we might need to take a vote to do that. We also have a movement, a meeting on September twenty-fifth to September twenty-fourth. And I'm just wondering, when are we going to take those votes? When do we need to do that so that we have the proper time for our city clerk to give positive answers?
As far as taking the vote, my recommendation would be as soon as possible. So if you can determine that tonight, I would agree to that tonight. And to the first question you asked, just as far as consolidation of the city treasurer position and CFO, that's a hundred percent the council's discretion. If you want it to be two positions, then it'll be two positions. If you want to merge it into one position, you have complete charter authority to do that.
Is it a vote, is it a resolution, how do we go forward?
Well, ideally, it would be adopting the classification schedule as well as the organizational chart in a manner that incorporates that positioning. Because if you don't wanna do it that way...
I'm fine, is that method a vote? Do we need to write something like a resolution or an ordinance?
Well, my recommendation would be to ask the city manager to come back to you with organizational chart and then he would adopt that at that point.
Awesome, let's do that, Mr. City Manager. And then lastly, we, actually, two more things. Could you, for the edification of our audience and maybe some of us on council, there's been a lot of consternation about our fund balance. Could you just explain exactly what that is?
So you also approved the ordinance that you want to be fiscal responsible. So there are cities out there, they have fund balance twenty-five percent.
Wait, what is a fund balance? So for the...
Oh, fund balance is you have revenues, you have expenditures. What is the rainy day, we call it rainy day, in case of emergency? Or in case you have revenue that has not come as you anticipated, how do you do? Expenses are there, you have your revenue, whatever remains beyond the expenses, that's fund balance.
It's our, it's our cushion.
If it was in business, you would have to save the... It's the remaining of the expenses.
Okay, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, because you may have something to say about this as well. We, there, when we're, when we're talking about processes of bringing resolutions to the table, I know that there's been some discussion about... I know that there's been some um, discussion about what is a city event. And recently, there was a, there was a community event on Old National and that person had to pay thousands of dollars for private police. And so we do not have yet a, uh, uh, we do not yet have a process in place to determine when events are a city event. I believe Councilwoman Gilliard has a resolution that hopefully will get to us soon. As we don't have a process for determining that yet, I am wondering, um, who is paying for the police and paramedic staffing for the race that we're having on Saturday? And the race that is also happening on Old National on October thirteenth? Uh, so, so when we have police and paramedic staffing, I'm assuming that because we have no process for creating city events, that those, a- as with Tori Thompson and Old National Entertainment, the people playing on those events will also have to pay for police and paramedics to be there for those events.
Just clear, I'm trying to figure out what that into this conversation.
I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's a budget question. So I just want to make sure that we are, I, I, that, that's my question. When we have these events and police and paramedics are there, who is paying for them now?
So I don't have come across those expenses unless they have gone through the department. And if they have not come from the general fund, we may not know. Unless if they have come from the department, that is part of the expenditure in their budget. Unless you share that it has been paid from somewhere else. So if it's the department, that is part of the, the expenditure in the budget. If it's not, then we should have been told who has sponsored that. So I'd rather have information as to who has sponsored. So it may be either privately or it has been funded through the department as a normal expenditure.
You got it, Mr. Mayor. I think that uh, I would direct that to the attorney and, and manage to talk about private versus public and what stand we should make and, and give us something back in writing uh, that will help us in that conversation. I want to talk to you about fund balance. Usually, uh, a fund balance recommendation comes somewhere around uh, one month's operating cost. Most cities, uh, I think when I was before the county, I was eight point three-three percent. And that represented about two month operating expenses. So that's kind of where you go for the fund balance. It's not, you can have money, money left, though it could be two dollars, you know? But the rule of thumb is always, we want at least one month's operating.
And, and the reason, the reason I said that is because we, we have a lot of events in our cities and it seems to be that some event operators are having to pay for police and paramedics. And then others, we're paying for them. And so I wonder if there's some savings in correcting that inequity in who pays and who doesn't pay when we have events.
I think we have very, we got you. Uh, and Miss Brown, and Miss Gilliard.
Thank you, uh, City Manager, for your comments. I am looking forward to the process because as we um, deliberate, it won't mean just looking at fiscal impacts. It also means that we don't add to the agenda so that the staff have time to look at any legislation to find out the fiscal impact. Um, when we took up this issue, that was one thing. I was like, can we just wait? So we had all of the information. So I'm looking forward to the process. Thank you, that is so necessary and so needed. And I think our public wants us to do that.
Ms. Gilliard?
Um, I wanted to make the comment that um, yes, it was rushed through and we need to know that we changed the fits. And now it's something that probably needs to even be adhered to. I don't even really know what it is anymore. Okay, even though we passed it not too long ago. But the important thing is if the, this is how I see it. And if we're supposed to be working together, if the finance team is working on a fit that let's say involves election day, and we all know that it does involve election day, then the finance should have went to the clerk. Clerk should have went to finance. They should have worked together on it rather than in a vacuum and separately. Had that happened, we would not have this conversation that we had today. And then it wouldn't look like one is doing what they shouldn't have done and the other is doing what they should have done. Because we're all supposed to be in it together.
Ms. Gilliard, I think you're right. And that's kind of where I was going.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that we need a accurate fit from everybody. Get your, get the opinions of everybody, bring something together. All right. Oh, we do, we have to govern ourselves according.
We sure do.
Right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Malazi.
Your turn.
The next item is an ordinance for second reading, amending Title Twelve Licenses, Permits and Business Regulations of the City Code of Ordinances to discourage human trafficking, preserve the health and welfare of the city and for other lawful purposes. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Willis. An ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero thirty-four, out of town.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but my, my understanding is that you were going to make a motion about the budget within that last discussion. If you didn't plan, if you don't intend to, then all.
Yes.
Making a motion? That I make a motion, I move, or whatever you say, make a motion that we, that we uh, schedule the approval of the budget for September eighteen and we all said um, are we going to do it in the morning in the day? Let's do it in the daytime.
In the daytime, because she said she, she needed, um, she had.
I can't do it in the daytime. Okay, she wants to do, let's do it in the daytime because uh, Councilwoman uh, Brown has a conflict in the evening. So um. So, 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 so Councilwoman Gump is making a good point. She said, send out one of those forms where we decide what's the best time.
The agency's having a work cheat out. The cheat out fee.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're talking budget here. This is the budget. Kind of like what Ben said about.
You don't have to decide the time right now.
Right, right now. We don't have to decide it right now. Okay, okay, let me.
Just decide the date.
Wait, wait, wait. If, if we cannot come up with the eighteen, can we do an alternate date? Can we do the nineteenth?
I think it would be a great idea for the council to recommend the eighteenth today or another date that we identify based on the policy. That we would just postpone it at no later than the nineteenth.
Yeah, that, that'll work, that'll work.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Mayor.
But the eighteenth, but the eighteenth doesn't look good. So let's move past that. Then the next one is the twenty-fourth. Moving from the twenty-fifth to the twenty-fourth because we've got to go to that training of the numbers. Okay?
I think.
And that's the goal, too?
I think what I would recommend for the council is to um, postpone the budget hearing from today until a date no later than the nineteenth to be decided at a later time and to move the regularly scheduled meeting from the twenty-fifth up one day to the twenty-fourth. That would be my recommendation.
All right, we'll get the second. Probably move to second, end of this session. Eric Dunn?
One, one thing, I just want to.
I just want to make sure that we're thinking about in our, in our budget for next year, we, we set aside no money for um, our city anniversary meeting. I just.
Just go ahead. All right, all those in favor? That passes. Okay, one extension. She don't do it. Okay, extension was that she's not going to be available. All right, the extension was that uh, Councilwoman Gilliard would not be available. Okay, Mr. Clerk. I think I just asked for. All right, Mr. Clerk, got me. On the ordinance. Human trafficking ordinance. I left for nomination, I mean nomination. I'm asking for a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance to discourage human trafficking.
So if you could probably move the second in discussion.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that the council knows that there was a fiscal impact for this order.
Okay. All those, all those in favor? That passes. Second, you pass it unanimously. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Also for second reading and ordinance providing procurement policies and for other lawful purposes, co-sponsored by councilmembers Willis and Jackson, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero thirty-seven, out of town.
I move that we approve procurement policies more than the twenty-eighteen zero thirty-seven.
Discussion, probably move the second in discussion. Um, she, let me get her name. Uh, Ms. Gons?
Um, in this approval of, in this approval of the procurement policies, is there any information regarding updates that will need to be signed by the elected officials? Is this regarding P-card transactions or?
I don't have an answer to that. But there, is Madam in favor required? Madam Attorney?
Yep, this ord- this ordinance. This ordinance does not involve the purchasing card transactions. That was previously adopted.
Is that information about the updates in that P-card? I would think it was.
Um, I don't believe so, but I don't remember offhand. Um, my suggestion would be um, you and I can get together and I can see if the information that you want in there is included. And if it's not, then we can do a amendment.
That's a difference between the procedural. Always required. So then fill it out.
Administrative procedure.
City Mayor, you have your.
Yes, so they, so I think if, when you sit down and you tell me what you would like to see in that ordinance, it may be something that can be accomplished administratively that we don't need to actually codify.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know what else? Yes. I would ask that we um, consider letting this motion fail and entertaining a motion to postpone um, this, the, the meeting of this ordinance for another day. I think that there are still some questions that council members have. We heard a great, um, we had a great conversation about equity. And most importantly, we already have an emergency ordinance in place. So we have a procurement ordinance in place. There's no need to rush through this ordinance if we're not ready, if everyone isn't comfortable with it. We do have an emergency procurement ordinance in place that can take care of the exigent things that we have, like sanitation contracts or whatever. Um, so I just ask that we let this fail and then um. Well, I, 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 I asked, well, I can't make a motion because we're in discussion for this motion now. So um, I would like to see this motion fail so that we could have more discussion about this ordinance uh, before we approve it. And we do have an emergency procurement ordinance.
But the, the opposite, the motion fail. You make another motion, am I right? Is he making another motion?
Well, procedurally, what you want is you can just be recommending to council members um, not vote today or. Come on, the motion.
Exactly. Okay, I got you now. So that we have, so that we have time to get this uh, right to a level where everyone is comfortable and we have, we do have this emergency ordinance. All right, we got you. Ms., Ms. Williston, will take the vote.
Um, majority of us on our own with this ordinance and um, that's often times part, it's part of democracy. I mean, you're not going to get um, in all instances, um, uh, votes that's favorable unanimously. And so I don't think that is the uh, wishes of majority of this council. The majority of this council um, have not expressed that they wish for this ordinance to fail.
Okay, well, let's find out right now. All those in favor? I guess you would like. That passed.
Mr. Clerk's point?
I'm sorry, six, two. Okay.
Uh, yeah, we had two, uh, yeah, six, two.
No, it'd be five, two.
I'm sorry, five, two. Yes, thank you. Over to Sam Stavich.
Oh, I see, five, two.
Okay, it's five, two. Okay?
Second reading as well. This is an ordinance amending the City of South Fulton Truck Routes Ordinance in Chapter Two of Title Eight of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances, Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen dash zero thirty-eight.
Here, Mr. Clerk, before I call anything on that, I want to go back and all of those who voted, I was sitting on the last one, just raising hands, because we got some discrepancy on who voted. Five, two. Am I correct, Mr. Clerk?
I'm seeing four, three.
Four, two.
Now it's four, two, she had voted.
You're claiming?
No, I didn't raise my hand.
The vote is four, three in favor of the policy.
That's what it is. Can you go right here? That big guy blew y'all in the background. Go ahead. That takes you to the truck routes ordinance. I'll let me a motion.
So Mr. Mayor, Council, I could clarify. Your current version includes the eight concessions that were made by the city pursuant to the meeting that we had with FID representatives in the county. If you would like to include any of the four restrictions that I have provided you on the information, the spreadsheet that you have in front of you that are at the bottom of that spreadsheet based on the meeting with um, developer representatives in the city. At this point, if you would like to also include any one of, any of those four, then I would need that advisement tonight.
Anybody want to include that?
So, I just, just, just to be clear, we'll be voting to add more concessions on top of the eight concessions that we already made.
Right, okay.
Well, one of the, and for clarity, I recommend at least one of the concessions that has to remove the restriction along the portion of the road, a section of roads that is not abundant in any place by South Fulton.
What is the board's opinion? Do you want to go on as it is and you would add the uh, the, the, the thing we talked about?
So.
Another amendment.
Please.
Go ahead.
So will there be nine amendments versus eight if we only accept this one recommendation from you? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
That's correct.
And then we also have discussion about the access on the Derrick Road and um, the council. That was the.
But same to me, what about the one of Aurora eighty-five? We said yes to that.
No, my understanding was that um, you said no to, to those two, to the first two. So the first would have been lifting the restriction Flat Shoals from Buckingham Road to the Body of Christ and then lifting the restriction on Buckingham North of Flat Shoals to the industrial buildings that were um, several hundred feet down from Buckingham.
I got solution, I got solution.
I was going to say, it's a point where we haven't said no or yes to anything because no one has made a motion. So at this point, we, right, until we make a motion, our.
He was trying, she was trying inside in the motion.
Yes, I think at this point, we're trying to do something. Decide how we're going to formulate it.
Exactly, right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The attorney recommended that we accept the Derrick Road amendment because it was only, um, and Ms. Gilliard, the attorney recommended that, that we accept Derrick Road and um, she recommended that we accept the Cedar Road, but I think there was a discrepancy with you. And Ms. Gilliard is part of one of not you all wanted to accept the Cedar Road. No, it wasn't. So you all want that or not?
There was two of them and one, he said absolutely.
Right, also Derrick Road.
And the other one, because it, they were, it was on the, the same street.
Right, Derrick Road was fine. That's when we said you were there.
Because, because it was that limited section.
Right, it was that small section.
Right. So we clear.
I, 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 I wonder if we could just take each one.
Yeah, I said, back without the. All right, so um, Madam Attorney, just read each one.
Okay.
And we do, start what we did, what we're going to do.
So the first was, the first vote would be whether to approve lifting of restriction along Flat Shoals Road from Buckingham Road to the Body of Christ Church. No. So would be a motion, I move that we deny, deny the request of lifting.
Second. Attorney, make your motion special.
Yeah, I'm giving you right away.
I move that we deny the request.
Second. Do probably move the second in discussion? All in favor? That passes. Next one.
So the second request would be to lift the restriction from Buckingham North of Flat Shoals Road to the industrial building several hundred feet up on Buckingham.
I move that we deny that request.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion? All goes in favor? That passes.
The third request would be to lift the restriction partially along Derrick Road to where Union City ends on the left side of Derrick Road, and you were on the right side of Derrick Road, and you were turning onto Derrick Road from South Fulton County from two eighty-five.
I move that we, um, allow that, but I want to make it clear that it is just from South Fulton Parkway to wherever that monstrosity of a warehouse ends. And then there'd be signage there to clearly delineate it. So make sure that that, it states that in there clearly. So that if there's any issue, you can always go back to what we said.
I second that approval as amended.
Probably move the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes.
And then the final was to lift a restriction along Cedar Grove Road, turning off from South Fulton Parkway.
That's the one.
And I would like to clarify here, there's a portion that we restricted that has Union City on both sides of the road. So as a minimum, I recommend lifting the restriction where Union City has jurisdiction on both sides.
And, and that's the, the, because there are two of them. And one we said absolutely no, the other one is where Union City is on both sides.
Right, correct.
So that's the one that we're talking about now.
Correct.
Okay, so I, again, I, I, I make a motion that we approve that for that limited space with signage to clearly indicate what part of that road belongs to the City of South Fulton and what part belongs to Union City. But probably if we don't do it that way, Union City will sue us, so we've got to do it that way.
Probably, probably.
As amended.
Okay, probably move the second in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes. Did we get them all?
And Mayor, it's not really clear from your motion, so we have the start of the road, South Fulton has jurisdiction, but about maybe a hundred, uh, two hundred feet down, that's where we get to where Union City is on both sides. So are you approving to lift the restriction for the entire length, which would be about, um, until, until Union City starts, which would be seven hundred feet? Or are you saying that the first two hundred feet would be restricted and then you would have a gap and then you?
What I, what I really want to make sure of is that the trucks don't come down Cascade Palmetto to Cedar Grove Road and come all the way down Cedar Grove Road to, to go on to South Fulton Parkway. If they come from South Fulton Parkway and go in the opposite direction, it's that beginning part where we have them on both sides of the street, correct?
Correct.
So that's what I'm saying.
So currently.
Limit that access from way down there, all the way down Cedar Grove Road.
So my understanding of the, the motion that you just approved is that you will allow access up to the portion that is slightly beyond Jones Lo, Jones Road where South Fulton starts.
No, Jones Road is not in this at all.
Well, Jones Road connects to Cedar Grove, so you have.
So we might need to hold this.
Mr. No. Hold up, Ms. Ms. Gilliard still has the floor.
Jones Road does, though, does not hold. Jones Road does connect. So, so they should come down South Fulton Parkway, and if they're going to go, it, it really doesn't make sense because where are they going to go? After they reach Jones Road, then it's the City of South Fulton. So, so that would give them access along the entire strip of Cedar Grove Road.
Well, no, what they're requesting is access turning off to Cedar Grove up to Jones Road, and that's because it is Union City on both sides of that road. So do, do you have the map in front of you? Because I.
No, I got it in my head. I see what you're saying.
Okay.
I see exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay, because I'm concerned about that long stretch where all those houses are after, after that. If it is off of South Fulton Parkway to Jones Road, that's fine. You can't go past Jones Road.
Yeah, it would be maybe not even, I don't think it's even three hundred feet past Jones Road. But it would not get into the residential area.
Right, right, we would have to do that, so.
That was, that was the motion you said?
Yeah, if that's, if that's the motion.
That's what I was, that's what she said.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
We didn't, oh, we didn't.
I move that we approve the amendment truck route ordinance twenty eighteen zero three eight with all the amendments.
Second.
Probably move the second, any further discussion?
I have a discussion.
Yes.
Just now, I'm, sorry. Um, you're saying that there is a road in our city that for one hundred feet is the City of South Fulton, and then for the next three hundred feet is the City of Union City, and then after that is the City of South Fulton. Is that what you just said?
So the, so the road is, it's, it's because of the way that Fulton County was annexed before South Fulton came into existence. You do have a unique situation with Cedar Grove where the first portion of the road is South Fulton, and I don't know if it's a hundred feet, it could be three hundred feet, it could be four hundred feet, but it's a short distance where the four, the first portion of the road is South Fulton, and then it becomes the city, Union City for perhaps a half mile. Up to, up to a little beyond Jones Road, and then after that, it turns back into the jurisdiction of South Fulton.
Okay. Wait, clear?
Yeah, I'm, I'm clear. I'm comfortable, but it is not my district, so if Ms. Gilliard, if, if, uh, if Ms. Gilliard is, if, I, I, I just, I feel like, I feel like the solution is to fix the boundary issue.
We talked about that earlier.
But, okay, that's all right. Ms. Wilson, we'll go on to the next, Mr. Mayor.
Fixing the boundary issue is a normal issue. That's why we, we make this decided, the common city. I mean, we have a top of map, that's, this is the issue to the common city. Half of my street is in Union City, half of this city is South Fulton, so it's where I live as well. Uh, but I do want to remind everyone that we, this is not the end of this truck ordinance, Ms. Mayor. We have to get approval from the Board of Commissioners in order to enforce this truck ordinance. And so we need community support at the next county commission meeting on September eighteenth at nine forty-five A M. Because if that, if the Board of Commission does not approve the resolution to allow us to enforce this truck ordinance, then these trucks are going to be roaming through our communities.
All right, let's go to the next issue. Next. All right, we vote, yeah. Oh, let's vote. Let me talk some up, yeah, vote. Uh, all goes in favor? That passes. With one, six two, one. One, nothing, Mr. Colley.
The next item is a resolution to authorize the use of eminent domain to acquire real property interest necessary to complete, and we're going to add wording to this agenda item, En Road and Danforth Road projects.
I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the use of eminent domain to complete sidewalk projects on En Road and Danforth Road.
Second.
Probably move the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, okay, I think that was, did you vote?
I did.
Okay, that's, that's.
No, I'm voting no.
You voted no?
Yes.
Okay, that's, uh.
Six one.
Six one, Mr. Colley, go first. Next?
Okay, the next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of orders, uh, of agreement, excuse me, between the Atlanta Regional Commission and the City of South Fulton for the update of the South Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a M O A for the Atlanta Regional Commission to develop the South Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
Second.
Probably move the second, any discussion? Yeah, Ms. Gilliard.
Yes, I want to know who are the members of the stakeholder committee? Who are the members of the stakeholder committee?
I agree with Mayor and Council. We don't have the membership, uh, upon the, receiving the request from proposal and aware of the project, that's when we will start the process. And each of you will be part of that process.
Um.
All right.
Go. Uh, I see in this document that the matching funds were already paid by Fulton County. I just want to make sure that all of the matching funds were paid and we're not going to get another bill for this later.
Actually, R C O already has the funds.
Okay, it's good. It's good, I still have the phone. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
The next item is two thousand eighteen audit contract approval. This is a request by my head.
Good morning, Mayor and the City Council. At the end of my presentation, I, I'm requesting the council to, um, approve the reinstatement or the renewal of the contract with our C B A, who are auditors because of the nature in which we are, I would request us that we proceed with the renewal so that they can help us as we finish the year and for the next year. Our current auditors are Morden and Jenkins. They are the top ten auditors in the state. They are familiar with the situation in which we are, that we are operating on negative fund balance, and they have been with each and every city in the, uh, Fulton County that are in our situation, that had a negative fund balance. As you all know, that we borrowed twelve billion dollars and we haven't paid that twelve billion dollars, we are likely to pay by the end of this fiscal year.
Mr. Wilson, if you don't mind, I can say. You have a motion?
I move that we approve the twenty eighteen audit contract.
Thank you. Second. Probably move the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Rob?
That's a good question. I know, um, one of the things, the benefits of this contract is that our staff are able to avail themselves of free continuing education classes, have our staff take advantage of that.
That's true. Actually, we had the, um, one, I just go, I think less than two weeks ago for free, and that was what we're going, so, yeah, that's it.
Okay, hearing all the comments, all those favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Attention to the city manager's report.
Oh, no. I, I have, uh.
She added.
I move that we approve our ordinance of ending the City of South Fulton Hotel, Hotel Taxation Ordinance for other lawful purposes. I move.
I said. Probably move the second, any discussion?
What this is doing is, um.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Good.
What this ordinance is doing is bringing our city into compliance of hotel, hotel tax, um, as reported by Mr. Christopher Pike. We, um, should be collecting hotel, hotel tax at the rate of five percent until we approve the resolution and request from our South Fulton delegation to, um, introduce legislation in the General Assembly, local legislation, to allow for us to collect over five percent.
All go.
I don't have a copy of the ordinance. I can give you.
Um, the attorney filed the ordinance in, so.
Ms. Fox has his copies, if you don't.
What's the number, Ms. Burge? Well, we'll have to sign it, a number, so we can give it today. Zero thirty-nine.
Zero thirty-nine?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No fiscal impact.
Any fiscal impact, what's going?
Well, this ordinance, again, I would repeat, what this said, what this ordinance does is playing our hotel, hotel tax in compliance with the state law. The state law requires cities to collect hotel, hotel tax up to five percent. Anything over five percent has to have approval from our, um, General Assembly. So we need to get into compliance, because that's what this is doing.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? That passes. You have a motion?
Yes, you have a. Mr. Mayor?
That takes you to the manager's report.
Mr. Mayor? All righty, so Council, I will be very, uh, brief, uh, prior to diving into the public works, proposed, uh, service model, I wanted to highlight just a couple of items, uh, for the council. Uh, I think number one, I want to highlight that just today, the City of South Fulton made a very big step when it comes to transportation. Our mayor was appointed as the Region Eight Transportation Liaison, uh, for this new A T L legislation that came out of the Georgia General Assembly. I think that is extremely important for us because now, not only do we have a seat at the table, we are the primary representative for our region, so that's a very big deal, and congratulations to our mayor. Uh, I think, secondly, uh, I would ask for, uh, I guess, and it is not a, I guess it's an update, because, uh, it does not require authorization because it brings money into the city, but I wanted to let you know, not only have we been receiving our, uh, franchise fees as an, at an accelerated rate, where we receive from Comcast, I believe, I know from, uh, A T and T and Georgia Power, and so we're receiving those revenues, but A T and T has reached out and approached us about another revenue area tied to our franchise fees, uh, which is the A T A, the A T and T Small Sales Agreement, where we will be able to, they will be able to install small sales, uh, that increase their capacity, but also allow us to have additional revenues. And so we are working, we are waiting that agreement from A T and T, which we will then, of course, have our attorney look at to make sure that it is, uh, true to form and in the best process for the city, but that's an additional revenue stream that we expect to have, and we expect to execute that in the near future. The, the next, uh, thing that I wanted to highlight is that on another agreement that, again, is not cost the city money, I just want to tell you about it so that we're not signing anything and you not know it, but also this one, uh, requires your attendance on yesterday, uh, the U S Small Business Administration and District Sixty-two, uh, called in a variety of administrators, including Fulton County, Douglasville, and other, uh, city managers, and the county manager, uh, Mr. Dick Anderson, because they will be hosting a, uh, a strategic alliance on October twentieth. Uh, I do not have all of the details in front of me, literally went to that meeting, uh, at the Capitol, uh, yesterday, uh, but during this alliance, they'll just be bringing resources and information to, uh, the District Sixty-two region about how to access, uh, Small Business Administration resources. They were very, uh, excited and impressed about our commitment, uh, for the incubator and wanted to ensure that, uh, we have representation on a panel that they will be doing. And so when you do anything with the federal government, including, especially the Small Business Administration, there is a simple agreement that they provide, and I think I sent it to our attorney earlier today to look at, but I think it'll be an opportunity for us to be represented well and for us to access some federal resources, which I know is important to the council, and so that's October twentieth. Uh, in addition to that, uh, there are two other small things, well, I don't think they're small, but, um, our council, two members of our council, um, Councilmember Guns and Councilmember Rao have been recognized by Who's Who in Black Atlanta, um, and that, uh, activity is on September twenty-first, and so just kind of want to highlight, you know, we're getting a lot of positive recognition because we're doing a lot of positive. because we're doing a lot of positive work, and so it is very rare, you know, that when you're talking about the metropolitan area, you have politicians outside of, you know, the little A Atlanta that get to, you know, really influence the region. So I think their recognition really highlights the direction that the city is going in, and I'm excited that, you know, the region is recognizing our leadership. I think finally, we received, and I believe this was yesterday also or last night, the request for the legislative agenda for the South Fulton delegation. And so staff has identified key areas, and before we submit that, we submit it to the council. And so you'll be receiving those items of the proposed things from me tomorrow before close of business with a request on how to appropriately proceed and submit it. And so I just wanted to highlight those areas before talking about the proposed public work service model. So if you have any questions, concerns, or anything about those items, I can address them now.
We got one recognition that happened Saturday with our municipal court.
Oh, man, I'm tripping, I apologize, yes. Our municipal court had three members recognized for the Legislative Justice Award, which is also regional, and man, so listen, City of South Fulton is being recognized for the great work that I think we're all collaboratively doing. So, man, it's exciting times to be in the city.
Have we submitted a legislative agenda?
We have not.
Okay.
They just sent the request out, that's all.
So what was the request? Is the request a need with us?
To identify the items that would go on a legislative agenda, that's all. The meeting, I think, comes later.
Okay, so who is going, when are we going to be consulted about this items?
Tomorrow, that's what I'm saying. We, so the process, and listen, I just know the processes that I know, I don't know whether it happened before. But we already, when we talked about this in my first month, one of the things we've tasked staff with over the last quarter is just coming up with all of the areas that either you guys have brought to us or we need to bring to you that are state, similar to what Mr. Pike reported on today with TADS and finance and things. So we just have an administrative list, we would submit that to you guys, you would give us feedback on the policy list, and then together, we would submit it as one package. Just may.
Mr. Khalid? First of all, listen, I just want to point a clarification. It was Councilwoman Rao, Councilwoman Gomes, and the members of our justice system. Those are all African-American women, so I just think that that's awesome for South Fulton forever. The, I have a question about what time the end is on October twentieth?
Uh, so I will tell you, I am not certain they actually finalize the time just yet. I think it's an all-day activity, and if I'm not mistaken, they have held out from eleven until two with the panel that I do know is at twelve o'clock. But we will get all of the information, I believe, tomorrow from Mr. Bo, I'm sorry, Representative Bodie's office and the SBA, and I forgot, their, their district director, Ms. Terry Dennison. We'll get that information, all of the final details tomorrow.
So I just want to play out a conflict that I, that I have with that event. I have also been working in conjunction with our election holiday, as we had last year. We will be having our Electoral College. And I am confirming candidates for Governor Stacey Abrams and Brian Kemp to come to South Fulton on October twentieth. There's been a lot of concern about them coming to South Fulton. I am supposed to get confirmation on that tomorrow as well. I was going to hold off on announcing that until I have confirmation.
And I think these are, you know, separate events that are all great for the city, and the city outside, you know, we're gonna have conflicts, but we got enough residents who are engaged and we hope, you know, attend and participate in both. This one is a federal activity, and so I think, you know, we can have representation at both. And I think it's a great opportunity both are looking forward to.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, just a point of, just a point of clarity for October twentieth. This is Fulton County's event in conjunction with South Fulton?
No, 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 no. I was just basically naming the people who they invited to this impromptu meeting to discuss the strategic alliance. I guess, I don't want to call it a conference, but activity that the SBA is doing. It is a collaboration between the SBA and District Sixty-Two, for State District Sixty-Two. But the municipalities who exist within District Sixty-Two are invited to attend and participate. And I believe because of our work around the incubator, the branding of Destination South Fulton, et cetera, et cetera, they want us to actually have a role to highlight the activities that we're doing and municipalities can actually look at as an example.
Excuse me, did you say the branding for Destination South Fulton?
Yes.
How are we gonna get the branding if we haven't been presented this to you?
No, it's, it's just the use of a brand for your economic development department.
How do you get a brand if you don't even know what your economic development is?
So your name is a brand, so.
We don't have a name yet.
You have a proposed one, so they look at Destination South Fulton as your proposed.
No, I told me that was a proposed name. I didn't know that. I know it's the name of a department, but I didn't know that that was our.
Okay, now, now that we heard that. Go ahead, you, Mr. Manager.
That's it?
Well, no, I won't go to this, I think I missed something, though.
No, you didn't, no, you didn't miss it. You don't miss a thing, you didn't miss it. You didn't miss it. Go right ahead.
Alright, so the, the public work service model, the, the public work service model that staff is proposing, uh-oh, I did something. That we are proposing, just kind of focused on making sure that we're combining field service, citizen engagement, including the public, the three-one-one platform, and a predictive management system that I think council pointed out earlier today. They ensure that we're kind of yielding responsive services to citizens and that we are addressing concerns related to the transfer of the public work facility for the provision of our work. We've also identified a few areas that cause us a little bit of heartburn here. So what we are looking at is a hybrid model that uses contractual services and city personnel, which is very similar to what Fulton County has, but the layout of it would be a little bit different. So again, one major concern that we have in transitioning public works is transitioning this public works facility for the provision of work. And what I mean is, is, you know, right across the street, we have one facility that we believe will be a part of our transition. But there is another facility, which is extremely important, and that's the county science shop, which is actually an aviation facility, which the city is not on target to receive. So that's one area that, as we look at this model, we look at a way to address it financially. I think in addition to that, there are some discrepancies that we have found in the county and the city's pay grades that we are looking and working with the county to be able to address. I think initially, or historically, during these transitions, all staff have been transitioning at their current rate of pay. And in the examples of police and fire, those pay rates have been higher than our pay rates. Well, in this transition, it's actually a little different in that some of the county positions, at least for our working class, non-executive staff, they actually receive less than our minimum paying class schedule, and so that still has to be rectified. I think what we also see is that their executive leaders actually receive more than the city's paying class. And so as we transition, this is something that we have to address, especially for what may be the most expensive department that we would be taking on, which is why we are proposing this hybrid model where, for the most part, the working class, non-management staff would be fully transitioned, and then we would use a hybrid of bringing on some of the leadership from the executive staff or leadership staff, and then contracting out some of those services. When you look at the public works service model at Fulton County, you have a public works director and you have a transportation director. Not shown here is, I guess, we would call it general services, but that's Dream that does all of the general services, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. And so they split it in between general services and transportation, very similar to what we're proposing. They also have a couple of high-level roles inclusive of that. So you have your deputy director, but you would also have a professional engineer. You also have a construction and operations manager, and you have a planning section as well. And then under the professional engineer, you have the traffic operations manager as well as the staff engineer. So those are some of the, the leadership roles there that exist within the county. I think for us, we believe that some of the roles around planning and engineering could be leveraged into a contract to receive those services externally, with still having the contract and operations manager and the traffic and operations manager in-house, and within those, being able to add a specific stormwater crew and expanding the maintenance crews that they have. Additionally, as you dive a little deeper into the transportation model, which is the staff that we would be bringing over, you'll see that the areas that I'm kind of highlighting here around the traffic sign, the, the, and I'm sorry, maintenance is not included on this one, I'm sorry, just the next one, I apologize. I skipped one. So when you look, you'll see that there are basically three crews that are providing that role, maintenance. What we would be doing is basically adding an additional crew that's specific to stormwater and allows us to also expand the maintenance to be able to take on this new responsibility of right-of-way maintenance that currently is being coordinated by GDY. When you look at the components of, of this activity and this proposal, you would have two maintenance tracks that would take place under public works. So one is the maintaining city right-of-ways and then maintaining city property. It's just putting them in two big buckets. I think Councilmember Khalid in our last meeting kind of highlighted his concerns about, you know, making sure, I think the mayor did as well, making sure that the right people are doing the right thing. And so I think our model does do that. The maintenance of city property would be parks and recs facilities and other city-operated facilities. I think the quote was, you know, you don't want the general services folks cutting your parks grass, but you do want them doing your right-of-way. And so this is the separation that would allow us to do that. I think one thing that I want to highlight the council is, we believe a lot of the issues that we're having is based on how we measure the delivery of services. So right now, I think they focus on the amount of miles that are cut per week. And I think what we want to look at is not only the amount, but the frequency to measure both. So are we cutting the ninety-six miles or whatever it is? Are we cutting the ninety-six miles every four weeks versus every eight weeks? Or whatever those metrics are, we would look at it more holistically than just the amount of time that we cut it. I think that same model is what works for parks and recs under our leadership versus when it was not. The other piece that's very important is under this model having those different groups segmented. That way, you're able to make sure that the road and sidewalk maintenance, I think we've gotten a lot of complaints about growth coming out and through the sidewalks and who is responsible for those. So under this model, increasing staff in those areas, the transportation department would be able to coordinate those. I think one of the key considerations that we also wanted to point out is that the timing for T-Spot projects can be adjusted, and we would seek council guidance on that. What I mean is, is that if an approved project is scheduled for FY twenty and you wanted to move it to FY nineteen, if you wanted to move something from FY nineteen to FY twenty, you would have the ability to do that. In addition, of course, under our public works model, solid waste management would be held under that. And so it would include the residential trash collection and recycling, the public education, and all of those activities. Under public works, those other items will be under transportation, but this responsibility would be under general services and reported directly to the public works director. It would be, unlike the direct service model for the others, it is, as you know, competitively procured. One other area that we are working with Fulton County on, we literally got the service model for it just yesterday, is the operation of Mert Miles and the cost and how we could increase bulk disposal options to not necessarily eliminate, but have a positive impact on legal dumping and other activities. And so one area that does not transition with us that we believe this model will allow us to address is facilities maintenance. Right now, with the exception of our facilities manager, we have not had any facilities maintenance support because those things stay with the county because that is also a county function. And so there is a need for us to make sure that our facilities are maintained. And so one thing that Mr. Walker has already started doing is facility assessments that are already in process, and we have put together a repair schedule that we would plan to augment FY nineteen. Additionally, fleet maintenance, another area that is not transitioned. And so we would be doing that under the general services department through the shared services model that I think we've talked about quite a bit over the past few months. I think you guys are very familiar with the street sign and lighting activities, and so we've already started that process, and that's one of the best activities that is coming over. I think we've got a great leader over there and a great crew who is very active and efficient. And so the transportation department will still provide that service, and they, and we believe, they have a significant, a sufficient number of crews to maintain and proactive approach to signage, which I know is a big deal for the council. Now, stormwater management is another area in which that cannot only be costly, but also requires quite a bit of attention because there are requirements with the state. We've already started to engage D-DOT as well as our partners at Fulton County. And what we have not looked at until recently is stormwater recovery as a potential source of revenue. So it's not currently collected by the county, but we would be seeking guidance in FY nineteen from the city, from our council, on whether this potential source of revenue is one that we want to explore. I think water treatment is also something that we just have not known enough about, but we're now smart enough to ask the question on what the city's role is in water treatment. I think right now, all these activities are being coordinated by the City of Atlanta. At some point, we may want to take those activities on, but we first want to know what our role is, even in taking on transportation and public works, what role does the city now have to play in water treatment? So we have another meeting scheduled, well, we have quite a few meetings scheduled with Fulton County, where one of the key questions and one of the insights that we want is what our role, responsibility, and liabilities are. And so just to recap, our proposed model is a hybrid of staff that provides direct services as well as a blend of executive staff that would be contracted, as well as a transition of particular. that would be contracted as well as, uh, a transition of, uh, particular, uh, staff members from the county that exists. Yes, sir?
Uh, just real fast, one thing, a couple things I'd like to see. Number one is, I know what that model looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'd like to see what ours gonna look like.
Okay.
Right? Uh, the second thing is, this is a scary transition.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it just rocks me. And, uh, one of the things that rocks me is the fact that, uh, we look at the equipment, the condition of the equipment that we have and the cost that it wants to pay for. Uh, I think it's astronomical, I think it is, and we have to be very, very careful. So I'd like to see, before we go into, you know, what our, what our chart's gonna be, uh, where we staying on equipment, uh, as we come forward. Thirdly, you don't wanna mess that water. You really don't. You know, I, and I tell you, uh, the three cities, uh, of Almetto, Faribault, and Union City went to a reservoir action years ago. I guess it must be about eighteen years now, and they still paying the charges, they ain't got one drop of water. So when it comes to that water, you know, think about that real hard.
Absolutely. So, so I think for, just for the Council's knowledge, this is just high level. What they do and what we have to take on, as you can see, it is a lot, um, with it. Um, I normally don't, um, take a particular political posture, but I will tell you, um, while I appreciate the partnership that we have at Fulton County and the great work that they have done, I've been a little bit concerned about the level of partnership, um, and the quickness of the responses or the details of information that we are not getting in relation to this transition. And with it being our most costly and the one that is looming, I'm just not pleased. And, um, I think we've done quite a bit to learn and get to the bottom of certain things, but it is my expectation that on this transition, the county steps it up. And so we have said that in the meetings, we've put that out there, and we have some very strong questions, as you can see, about the model, and we don't believe that, um, you know, we can sustain the model that they have here with the city. And so we plan to bring back at that, I guess now, the twenty-fourth meeting or thereabouts, 'cause I know there's a poll, but, um, what our model looks like and why we are proposing this to the Council.
So, so because we're moving the, um, maintenance departments out of, uh, parks and recs and put them over in the public works division, does the money follow as well?
Yes.
The maintenance fees that we're collecting?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
So the maintenance fees that we're collecting to help with maintenance repair, will that follow, I'm not talking about the personnel, but then I'm talking about any maintenance fees that we collect from any type of external third-party services? Do those go as well? Because my understanding, we were using those fees, that staff was using those fees to maintain the field grounds, doing the grass cleaning and.
I, I think I understand what you're saying, it would be used for the same purpose, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the money will go, okay.
Correct, yes, ma'am. All of the funds, whether expended or generated, would go with that service, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gray?
I have, uh, two questions. One is for, one's for you, Mr. Mayor. Is, um, a sign shop one of the five uses that a county can operate? A sign shop, is that one of the five uses that a county can operate a facility and city limits? There's like, okay. Um, and then the other question is actually for our, our HR, um, director. I, we, we, and, for you, so I guess, if you, we approved, um, in, in this, well, well, in this budget that we have not yet approved, there is a pay-in-class study, right? And, and we have, we have asked as part of that pay-in-class study, this commitment. We held off on our, raising our minimum wage, uh, to fifteen dollars an hour, and that's going to be part of this pay-in-class study. And I'm assuming that these issues that we addressed in this chart will also be part of that pay-in-class study. And so, um, I just wanna make sure that we direct our, our communications director that, that we are doing this pay-in-class study. We are interested in making sure that we have living wages for the least of those in our city. Uh, I think that that's something that we should be proud of and advertise. But I just wanted to make sure that that pay-in-class study does address those issues.
I would say it does not address it immediately, though. I think for the area in which the, the staff members make less at the county, we would raise them up at the city. And while it will be addressed before the pay-in-class, we will be able to take care of that through transition, it just highlights the cost, the absorbent cost of providing this service. And so as we provide it, we just wanna make sure that the reason we are looking at this hybrid model is because we have to not only provide the same level, well, no, we wanna provide a better level of service than was provided by the county, which is why we're a city. And so in doing so, we also have to make sure that we do it in a cost-effective manner. And so we are looking at a model that allows us to do that.
Mr. Gray, yes, the person I think I asked, you want to say the sign shop will be in the city functioning? But we don't have a county sign shop that's not in our city.
Okay.
Yes, and that corporate, so it has to be done. It would be, uh, it would not be good, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mallow County Attorney? State Attorney? About ten o'clock, there it is, County.
Mayor, I have, um, a personnel audit that I'm bringing at this time of allowed. If you want to executive session.
Okay.
Take a motion that we go to executive session, start personnel. No, let's, 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 wait, what we got, what we need to do, I'll, I'll go ahead. Okay, you all want to, you want to, you want to? You wanna go, go that? Okay, good, we'll go into executive session.
Well, okay, well, I do wanna make that announcement. Um, so thank you for the recognition, Assistant Manager, uh, even though you're very humble and not recognize yourself, um, being included in groups who. So again, congratulations to you as well, and, uh, again, to Justice Ellen and her staff. So we are doing big things in South Fulton, and it feels good, oh, and, and the mayor. And it, and it feels good to walk out, you know, in our house, out of our house, and in public and people are starting to talk about the good things that are happening in South Fulton. So stay encouraged and continue to, uh, let up the light shine.
All right.
One quick thing, uh, on October eighteenth, thank you, Mayor, for helping me secure this. Um, we will be bringing Congressman David Scott here to District Three, um, at Solid Rock Synecy Church, uh, at six-thirty, um, and he will be bringing representatives from the, uh, Federal Department of Labor, and then we'll be bringing, uh, he will be speaking about the, uh, Atlanta Job Corps project that is being built in District Three as a federal project. Many residents had questions and, um, concerns, and so he will be coming and, um, bringing federal Department of Labor employees. And, uh, he will be specific to that and any federal updates that may impact our community. So we're very excited in District Three to welcome him to the city of South Fulton, uh, for the first time since we have been a city.
Okay, so we say we weren't gonna do this.
I know.
Okay, so, uh, I'll wait one. Okay.
Please, ma'am.
Let us, let's, let's go into the executive session.
Are we gonna come back out?
Hold it, when we go, we got town hall for you.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna announce the District One Town Meeting will be held on September twenty-fourth. Um, and we will be at Decision Point Elementary, so we want to encourage residents. The entire city are welcome, but of course, it's focused on District One. So, uh, we'll be at Decision Point Elementary starting at six o'clock, um, from six to seven-thirty, and we look forward to seeing you.
All right, and only because, uh, there are a lot of things that are still happening. Um, so I'm just gonna be really quick. Uh, for Comcast Care Day, District Two raised a little over three thousand dollars from the volunteers that came out to clean up. So on September twenty-first, they're gonna be awarding that, uh, three thousand dollars, I believe, to Stonewall Elementary, so we're excited about that. Um, on September the twenty-fourth, there is a community meeting for those who live on the northern corridor of the district for the Camp Creek, uh, diversion, diversion dining, um, at the Eretrophiles. So to get more information and make sure your voices are heard, please go out to the Eretrophiles office that is right behind the racetrack on September the twenty-fourth, um, to get your questions answered. On October first, District Two will be having their Public Safety and Town Hall Mental Health, um, focus. And our new chief will be out, will also be able to meet, um, our deputy chief as well, and then also two will have a mental health expert who is actually a resident of the city. And lastly, I'm not gonna bore you with the rest of it, but, um, on October the twelfth, we are having a meet, meet on the beach where we're actually, uh, it's similar to coffee with the cops, and we're gonna have a blue truck out, and we're inviting residents to come out from seven AM to nine AM at the Butler Village right there at Camp Creek and Butter Road. And I am working on the horses, I get calls every day, I see the horses on Butter Road. Trust me, we are working on these horses, okay? Um, so that's all I have to say, I just wanna make sure it was on camera.
Group with, uh, ten-six, October sixth, from ten to six, Porter Ridge will be hosting their Harvest Festival. Again, ten-six, October sixth, from ten to six, Porter Ridge subdivision will be hosting their annual Harvest Festival. Everybody, what time? What time? From ten to six? Ten-six, okay.
I make the motion to, uh, rate for executive session, um, personnel?
Second motion, second discussion. All of the favors.
Y'all, thank you, that is very.
I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
I said it, I'm gonna go forward. I'll wait one, I said it.
Just for the purpose of the record, here, there was no action taken during that discussion, and this motion to adjourn includes.
Motion to go to executive session. All right. All those are papers, huh? All right. All right.